Good afternoon. We are in the City of Marshalltown, Chamber, Council Chambers at 10 West State Street. Time for our council meeting tonight, and the date is May 13, 2019, and the time is 5:30 PM. Notice to the public, the mayor and council welcome comments from the public during discussion of any of the agenda items. You're required to step to the microphone, identify your name and address for the record, and limit your time to three minutes or less so that others may given an opportunity to so speak. All speakers shall speak clearly and direct their comments to the mayor and council, and not to any consular specifically. It's at the discretion of the mayor and council to respond to specific questions and comments, or to have staff respond during the meeting. We are called to order. Would those who are able please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Isom.
Here.
Lamer.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Weren.
Here.
Cahill.
Here.
Gowdy.
Here.
Hoop.
Here.
Very good. Thank you. At this time, under item E, it's time for mayor, consular, or administrator comments. Anyone wish to speak?
Your honor.
Mr. Burton.
I know later down on the agenda we have an item dealing with HydroClean. HydroClean is the company we contract for almost an annual basis to clean our storm sewers. As a reminder, I'd just like to pass along that residents should keep lawn cuttings and leaves out of the storm sewers. I know there's some leaflet's going to be put around as reminders for citizens to keep litter out of the storm sewers. It's really important, so I urge citizens to take note of that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Good comment. I know we posted about that on social media last week. Cut your grass so it stays in your yard. It's actually better for the grass and certainly better for our city finances. Any one else wish to speak?
Your honor.
Yes.
I was coming downtown on Sunday morning to enjoy a brunch with my children, and I noticed that between North First Street and North Second Street that much of the equipment was gone from in front of the McGregor store. So, that was amazing to me, and I want to, I know we had some people who, at their own, the peril of their own business of having customers come in and out, kind of waited us out on that, and they were patient, as could be, with the equipment that was there to repair storm damage. So, it was wonderful to see that open, and again, I think we're seeing more and more things changing as the weather gets nice in relation to the tornado and the continued recovery of our city.
Very good. Thank you. I noticed the antique store was open on Sunday, too, and doing a good business. Anybody else? Well, I can announce that both daughters are getting married this year, so if anybody knows of any low-interest loans, I'll be looking. [laughing]. Time for an employee recognition. Chief?
Actually, I'm leading off, mayor.
Okay. Very good.
Mayor and council, ladies and gentlemen, for the seventh consecutive year, we at the Times Republican are proud to partner with the Marshalltown Police Department and honor the TR MPD Employee of the Year. And for the benefit of television viewers and those here tonight, all employees, including civilians, at the MPD are eligible to win. While the TR has a partnership role in this endeavor, I do want to emphasize that tonight's awardee and those in past years were nominated and selected by peers at the MPD. Past winners were Officer Vern Jefferson in 2013, then officer but now detective Juan Tejada in 2014, Officer Paul Heitman in 2015, Administrative Assistant Alicia Hunter in 2016, she was the first civilian winner, Lieutenant Rick Belile in 2017, and crime scene technician Courtney Watson last year. She was the second civilian to be awarded. So, if you would, please help me congratulate the 2019 TR MPD Employee of the Year Sergeant Sadie Weekly.
Sergeant?
Sure. Well, an article about Sergeant Weekly will appear in this Sunday's Times Republican, and my colleague Sarah Jordan Hines will author that. With that said, please help me welcome again to the lectern Police Chief Tupper, who has some remarks.
Chief? You bet, chief.
Good evening. We're right on camera. So, I have a four-page speech. Now, before you get nervous, my doctor recommends reading glasses, okay? I recommend large font, so I'm not quite ready for the glasses yet, but I do have a few things to say, and I appreciate your time. So, I want to thank the Times Republican, first of all, for, again, sponsoring this recognition for our staff. It's important, and it's important for us to recognize great people. He read a long list of some really superstar people, but our police department is filled with great people. I like to use the term rock stars. My son thinks that's funny. I always wanted to be a rock star, so to me, that's the epitome of everything, and we have some rock stars working in the police department, and very fortunate to work with them. So, this is Police Week. May 12 through the 18th, this year's National Police Week, and it's always the week with May 15th in it because May 15th is National Police Officer Memorial Day, and so it's a special week for us, and it's important to us. It's important to me. I think it's an excellent time to reflect upon those law enforcement officers who have made the ultimate sacrifice and have given their lives in protection of our communities across the United States. It's also an excellent time to thank our local law enforcement officers and support staff and 911 operators for all the great things that they do for our community each and every day, protecting and serving in our community. We're very fortunate to work in this community, but it's a challenging job at the same time, and we have a great group of people that are doing a great job. It's important to remember that being a police officer is, can be, and very often is, a dangerous profession. According to statistics that I pulled off the National Law Enforcement Officer Memorial Fund website last week, on average, one law enforcement officer is killed in line of duty somewhere in the United States every 55 hours. Since the first known line of duty death in 1791, more than 21,000 law enforcement officers have made the ultimate sacrifice. Over the last decade, on average, 158 police officers are killed on duty in the United States each year. Nearly 50,000 are assaulted. In 2018, 158 police officers died in line of duty. So far this year, 41 have died in line of duty. Just numbers, right? Every year, I try to remind everybody that last year, 158 fathers, mothers, brothers, sons, friends, neighbors, uncles, aunts, died protecting their communities. It takes a special person to be successful in this job. I'm standing next to one. The city of Marshalltown is truly fortunate to have dedicated and compassionate professionals serving in our community, and I appreciate everything that everybody does. The men and women of the Marshalltown Police Department strive each day to provide exceptional police services. I won the lottery when you gave me this job. I get to work with these folks every day, and I've been here almost eight years now, and I'm slowly learning that the best thing for me to do is just stay out of their way, let them do their job, and we'll be just fine. I do want to personally thank all of our police officers, detectives, reserve police officers, support staff, 911 operators, deputies, state police. We have a lot of people that work in our community that serve and protect every day, and we're very fortunate to have a lot of great partnerships at the local, state, and federal level. Every one of our police officers and support staff in the Marshalltown Police Department do an outstanding job every day. I greatly appreciate their efforts. I also want to thank our reserve law enforcement officers that do this job for a buck a year. We have a great group of police volunteers that go through our Citizens Academy and then devote a lot of time throughout the year helping us perform our mission in the community. We just had a gentleman by the name of Bill Burke decide he's going to hang it up as a volunteer after 44 years last week. We have a great group of volunteers. I also want the community to know that we sincerely appreciate the tremendous support that we receive on a daily basis throughout the community. I appreciate everything that City Administrator Kinzer, Mayor Greer, and all of you do every day to support us, to give us the tools and resources that we need to be successful. It's a team effort. My peer department directors and our peer departments throughout the city, it's a team effort, and this community is great because everybody works together all the time. We are truly blessed to work in this community, in a community that values public safety and supports our public safety professionals. So, thank you for that. Now, I have a few things to say about Sadie. I promised I wouldn't embarrass her too much, but I do want you to know a little bit about Sergeant Sadie Weekly. She served our department for about 12 years now. She's also a 911 operator over in Tama County, so she does a lot of things related to public safety. When I started here, Sergeant Weekly was a detective, and she was working our sex crimes and domestic violence cases, tough cases, probably the toughest cases that you can work as a law enforcement professional, and she did a phenomenal job as a detective for many years. Since she's been promoted, though, she continues to lead the way for our agency in so many ways, but especially in the areas of domestic violence, sexual assault, family violence, crimes against women. For many years, Sergeant Weekly successfully managed a grant program that provided critical funding to our community so that we could have a domestic violence detective. She's led the charge in our efforts to track sex offenders, of which there are many, and it's a big job. Done a great job with that. Over the years, when we've had a big case and we needed help, she was always there, always has been there. We just had a big case a few weeks ago with a shooting, and she was right there, leading the way, helping us resolve that case. She's established herself not only as an expert locally when it comes to domestic violence and sexual assault investigations, but on a statewide level, she's recognized as an expert. We're very fortunate to have this professional here, these types of people working in our community. In fact, she teaches at the Law Enforcement Academy, teaches new cops how to do this Since she's been a sergeant, you've been a sergeant about a year now, she's attacked her new role as a patrol supervisor with the same level of commitment that she attacked her role as a detective. She's established herself as a proven leader. Her peers, subordinates, and supervisors all look up to her for her leadership, professionalism, and communication abilities. I look up to her for her ability to investigate crime and her ability to talk to people, always has a smile on her face, does a great job. She's doing an excellent job leading her patrol team. She works very hard, and what I really like about Sergeant Weekly is she doesn't ask anybody to do anything that she would not do herself, or probably is not already doing herself. That's what a leader is. We're very fortunate. We're very lucky to have Sergeant Weekly on the team. Now, every year, I try to come up with some terms that I think describe the person we're talking about, and here's what I came up for Sergeant Weekly. Professional, that's an easy one. Determined, reliable, tough, always got a smile on her face, but don't mess with her because she's a tough cookie, okay? She's not going to take your guff. She's committed, committed to doing the job right. She's noble. This is a noble profession filled with noble people. Sergeant Weekly is at the front of the class there. She's an expert. She's a leader, and I'm going to use my favorite term again, rock star, because that's what she is. I want you to also know that she's a worker. She comes to work every day, determined to be better than yesterday. She gets the job done, and I, for me, I think what's important is if my kids, I have five kids that I love dearly, if my kids needed help, I would want Sadie to be the officer helping them. That's the kind of person she is. So, thank you, Sadie, for everything that you do to serve in our community. We're lucky to have you. Thank you for serving each day with passion and compassion. Thank you for your unwavering support of your team members and your community, and congratulations on this incredible honor.
I just want to say thank you. I am lucky to work at probably, if not, one of the best departments in the state of Iowa, the best, the police department in the state of Iowa, but we couldn't be that without Chief Tupper. He leads us great. I work with a lot of great people, and I know you guys all support us. Chief Tupper forwards us emails that you guys send when you support us. We had a really tough year this year, you know, starting with the tornado, and we had a lot of high-profile tough crimes to investigate, and we did a really good job, but we couldn't have done that without your guys' help, without Chief Tupper's help, so, thank you. Everyone, I want to thank my family, too. They're all here. They came a long way, so we'll get out of here before anything. Thank you.
This might be a good time to put in a plug for the "Back the Blue" signs. The one we had at home got broken, and they just restocked them, so I think they're $10 apiece. We have one at the office, one at home. I invite people to get those "Back the Blue" signs. They're just great. Thank you. Nice to have a meeting start with something like that. Wow. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Your honor.
Yes.
Maybe in the future, we look at changing that noon meeting to that evening. I see there's another one that thinks it's a good idea.
Are you talking about the special meeting we're going to have in a couple weeks?
No. The 28th.
Oh, the 28th.
The 28th. Instead of having it at noon, because it'd be easier for me, and I think a few other people in the public would have more access if we added it in the, at 5:30 like we do our normal ones.
Okay.
If you, I was going to say, if you would want to pull that item, we could reconsider it with that amendment to make it a 5:00 PM meeting on the 28th.
Yes. Yes, that would be nice.
Okay. Consider that one pulled. Any other suggestions or anything else that ought to go on or off the consent agenda? If not, let's do roll call.
With item off the agenda.
Item two.
Two. Lamer.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Weren.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Gowdy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Very good. Okay. Madam Secretary, would you please read those items?
Approve Council Minutes of April 22 and the Bill List of $2,097,762.54. Recede the Building Report for March. Approve Renewal Tree Terminal License for Jose's Tree Service. Resolution Declaring Certain Property Surplus Property and Authorizing Sale and Disposal of a Transit Bus 1984 Ontario. Resolution Declaring Property Surplus Ford F-150 Truck and 1975 Scatback 430. Resolution Approving Engineer Statement of Completion and Accepting the 2016 Santeri Sewer Televising Project with Final Project Cost of $57,267. Resolution Approving Contract Change Order for the 2014 Santeri Sewer Rehabilitation Project Decreased of $138,461.75. Resolution Approving Engineer Statement of Completion and Accepting the 2014 Santeri Sewer Rehabilitation Project Final Project Cost in the Amount of $1,750,103.35. Resolution Approving Contract and Bond for Construction of the 2017 Manhole and Point Repair Project in the Amount of $3,848.272.45. Resolution Authorizing the City to Request Assignment of Certain Tax Certificates Held by Marshall County Following the Public Nuisance Tax Sale. Resolution Approving a Contract for Services Between Access to Care in the City of Marshalltown. And that would be the end of the consent agenda.
Very good. Thank you.
He needs to go back and make that motion because we didn't approve number two.
At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve what had been item number two with the change in the time.
I would so move to change to, change the motion from Tuesday noon to Tuesday evening at 5:30.
On May 28?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Martin.
Yes.
Weren.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Gowdy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Lamer.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. Carried. Onto item G motions. Would you read the first one, please?
Motion to Approve New Outdoor Service Request for Tannen, Inc., 125 East Main Street.
Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Tie goes to Martin that time. I personally think it's a great idea, and I think they're going to need some extra space because every time I'm there, they're doing a pretty darn good business, and frankly, I hope that that idea catches on, and we have other establishments that do that. It just makes the downtown look more interesting. If you go to New York City, or San Francisco, or Austin, Texas, that's happening all over in the bigger cities. But if there isn't, if there aren't any other questions, we had, we have the drawings and the pictures in the packet. Let's just take a vote.
Weren.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Gowdy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Lamer.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Carried. Very good. Thank you, and thank you for having such a nice establishment in Marshalltown. Would you read item number two?
Motion to Approve New Liquor License for Hampton Inn Suites.
Move for approval, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion on this one? Roll call.
Cahill.
Yes.
Gowdy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Lamer.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Weren.
Yes.
Carried. Very good. Thank you. Onto item I, Resolutions. If you caught up with the roll call, would you read that one, please?
Well, would you want to do reports first?
Oh, I missed that. Yes. Reports first, age.
We have Janice Gammon with the Lincoln Highway Heritage Byway and Corridor Management.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak to you tonight. I'm with Prairie Rivers of Iowa. It's a 501(c)(3) in Ames, Iowa, that deals with conservation and preservation of resources, whether it be natural or not. One of our programs is the Lincoln Highway Heritage Byway, so I'm contracted with the DOT to oversee the route as it travels from Clinton to Council Bluffs, and that, of course, So, as part of our agreement with the DOT is that we will do a corridor management plan, and this is it in real life. It goes through 13 counties, 43 communities, so it's quite large, and it covers a lot of different things. There are six intrinsic qualities that make up a byway. It's archaeological, cultural, historical, natural, recreation, and scenic. So, I need to know what's going on in all 13 counties in all those areas, so it's a lot to keep track of. So, one of the things that we did to do this plan is we had local meetings, and we held it at the Marshalltown Public Library. This picture, I failed to take pictures there, so this is in State Center, but it's close by, right? We got ideas from the community as to what they wanted to see for local projects or state projects. I also looked through all of the comprehensive plans for all the counties and all the communities to try to figure out what's already on the books, what you're already looking at, and how we could fit in as a byway. So, out of these meetings, we also had brochures that we created. The first one in 2016 is, covers all those intrinsic qualities, and is divided by those and is color-coded. And then, the 2017 one is about camping and recreation. When you're traveling a historic highway, you don't always think, oh, I could camp there or could do some sort of boating, fishing, hiking, whatever, so we created this to get a different market to come to the byway. And then, last year, we did one that geared more towards kids. It's a Junior Explorer booklet. It has a spot on the back where the kids can get a stamp. There's like 15 different advertisers in here. The one in Marshalltown is "Let's Play Bounce," that kids can go to, get a stamp, stamp the back of their book, and if they get eight of the 15, we didn't figure parents would drive all the way across the state, but maybe a section of it, they could get a prize if they turned in. We didn't put an age limit on this, so you're all welcome to partake of this. All those brochures are on our website, and you can download those, or just, I put my business card in there, too. You can give me an email, or send me an email, and ask for copies of it, and I'll be glad to send those to you. Another thing we've done is interpretation across Iowa. The one in the upper left is an Eagle Scout project that was done in Tama. The Boy Scouts of America put in the markers in 1928 to mark the Lincoln Highway. And if you don't know about the Lincoln Highway, it was the first improved transcontinental road in the United States. It begins in Times Square, goes all the way to San Francisco, and in Iowa, from Clinton to Council Bluffs. So, we're trying to do interpretation along the way to explain more about the Lincoln Highway and its importance. This Eagle Scout project, he found at a estate sale, an original Lincoln Highway concrete marker, and purchased that, and got donations to do the installation, pay for the panel and the concrete there. And you can't see it very well, but the Lincoln Highway Bridge in Tama is right behind him. So, it's in a park right next to that. The picture to the right is the Deep Rock Station in Jefferson, Iowa, and the city actually owns that and restored it, and it's more like a museum-type thing, but it's very close to their bike trailhead. And then, the three bottom, smaller panels will go in the east entrance of Jefferson, and that, again, will be around a concrete marker. And then, the picture of the gentleman on the lower left, that is Henry Osterman. He was the first field secretary for the Lincoln Highway Association that helped promote the road back in 1913 when it was first laid out, and he was also the vice president. He has quite a history. He was born in Indiana, and at age six, he was in New York supporting himself as a newsboy. And at 14, he joined the Navy, served for three years, and then traveled around the country doing odd jobs. One of them was promotion for Wild Bill's, Wild Bill Hickok's Wild West Show, and then he got this job with the Lincoln Highway Association. He'd already traveled transcontinentally in 1908 and 1912 before there even was a road really to do that. So, he was really quite an expert in what he was doing. He had an idea to do a military convoy because he was piloting things up and down the east coast in 1917 during World War I, and he kind of combined his two occupations, one with the military and one with the Lincoln Highway, and said, "Let's take military vehicles across the United States." That was in 1919, and then in 1920, on his 21st trip across the United States, he was on his honeymoon, actually. They postponed the honeymoon, and he was staying the night in Tama, but he was heading to a very early morning meeting in Marshalltown, and he went around a slow-moving vehicle outside of Montour, on the east side of Montour, and the car flipped over, and he was killed instantly. So, this is one of the things we want to do in interpretation on him, and actually, we just ordered the panel this morning, so it's on its way to be created and will be installed there at the cemetery. But we're hoping that we can put a panel of some sort of interpretation in every community along the whole route. Some of the statewide projects we've done, and there should be in your packet a list of the state- Some of the statewide projects we've done, and there should be in your packet a list of the state projects and the local projects. Some of them are, we're working with the American Society of Civil Engineering for a Historic Landmark Award. We help the Lincoln Highway Association, which is a different 501(c)(3). We help them with their newsletter, website, Facebook, and then I service their secretary. We work with Travel Iowa encouraging attractions to be listed. So we, we really try to work with attractions and say, you need to put your site on the Travel Iowa because they pull from that website to their Travel Iowa magazine that, or pamphlet that they hand out, mail out when people ask for information about Iowa. I worked with other states, uh, forming an alliance. It's a state, um, byway in Ohio, Indiana, Iowa, Nebraska. Illinois is the only section that's a national scenic byway. And then on the east coast and the west coast, they're, they're not labeled byways, but you can still drive the route. You can still do it today. And then I take inventory of missing signs along the route and there's 1,200 of those across the, the state. Our current Marshall County projects, I've been working with Val out at the C, uh, the Visitors Bureau and, um, a gentleman at the Veterans Home. There's gonna be two reenactments. Remember I said Henry Osterman had this idea to do this, uh, convoy back in 19, well, he had the idea earlier, but by the time they got it arranged, it was 1919. So the convoy actually started in Washington DC at the South Lawn of the Capitol and, or the White House. And there's a thing there called the Zero Milestone. It's a concrete marker and it actually says, this is the spot where the 1919 convoy left. So they didn't start in Times Square, but they started in DC and went to Gettysburg, caught the Lincoln Highway there and then traveled the rest of the way across the nation on the Lincoln Highway. So on their way, um, we didn't have the problem in Iowa, but on the way, they broke 88 bridges with the heavy equipment and had to replace those. But, um, uh, also on this convoy was Dwight Eisenhower. He was a lieutenant colonel at the time. And he, um, some say that he got his idea for the interstate system at that point where he, he could see what it was like to move troops from one side of the country to the other. Plus his experience in Europe with the Autobahn, uh, helped him, uh, sign into law the interstate system. So there'll be two convoys coming through. One is, um, militar, restored military vehicles. And the other one will be the Lincoln Highway. And Val will talk a little bit more about that, too. I also put in your packet, we had a company called Schmickly Reserve that did an interpretive plan. And it's not quite as thick as the comprehensive plan, but it covers some of the same things. It talks about what we should interpret and, uh, themes and things like that. So I put a copy of what they said about Marshall County in your packet for you to review. So I'm, I'm open to any questions if you have any. Otherwise, I have my business card in there and you can, uh, send me an email and ask me a question later.
Any questions, comments? That was very interesting. And it's cool to be on that trail and that we're also on the National Rail.
Yep, I just saw that, mhm.
Trails, Rails to Trails path. It'd be nice if the two associations could even figure out how to get together and, uh, communicate. And then oddly enough, the daughter who's getting married next month lived within two blocks of the marker in New York City and within two blocks of the marker in San Francisco.
Oh, wow.
Both ends, yeah.
I've, I've heard people say that before. Oh, my daughter's son went off to college and I felt like they were so far away. Then I realized, we're just so far off the Lincoln Highway and we're really, it's just a straight shot and they could be there, so.
Exactly.
It does connect the, the country.
Yep, well, thank you very much for that report, Dan. Okay, onto, uh, report number two, CVB.
We have Executive Director Val Ruff.
Hi, uh, Val Ruff, Executive Director for this Convention and Visitors Bureau. Maybe I won't need my readers like Chief Tupper, I just made a big font. Just a quick update, I'm gonna be talking about, um, some, uh, figures that are gonna go, that will be from like January to current. So they're for six months. I just wanna thank Joel for, uh, Mayor Greer for signing the proclamation for the 2019 Tourism Month. And, uh, cause, um, as Chief Tupper said, uh, May actually is also Tourism Month. And so it's a good time for families to get out and, uh, get your travel plan set or, um, get your campers out and get to the 29th parks that are the part of the initiative that's, uh, Travel Iowa. And just get out and, and do some traveling and this is usually when people start doing that. So a couple of things, um, a few things I wanted just to give you an update on. We are working on a brand-new visitors guide and, uh, we're hoping to have that, uh, arrive by the end of May and out by the first of June. And I'll be sure to share that with you. And just a tidbit of information, I always like to share these little pieces of trivia, so you can take them out into the community and use them however you'd like. But of the 60 dining options that we have in Marshalltown, 35 of them are locally owned and 17 are in the downtown. So I thought that was a pretty, pretty interesting number that 35 of those are locally owned. So I think that, that speaks volumes for our community and we've got a lot of locally-owned restaurants, mom-and-pop restaurants here in town with great food. We, I'm just gonna give you some recaps. We've had, um, two group tours. Uh, we've had a big interest in, um, the art gallery recently because it's Mary Cassatt's 175th birthday. And so we have a piece of, um, Mary Cassatt's in the, in the art gallery. We also have, um, like, um, Janice had mentioned, we have a couple of different groups coming through on the Lincoln Highway. There's been a lot of interest in the Lincoln Highway. Um, the, the Iowa Magazine has also written an article on the Lincoln Highway. So we've got a lot of interest in that right now. So we've been communicating with Jan and, uh, Dex Walker from the, the Veterans Home about this military convoy that's coming in, uh, in August. And they'll be staying, what I understand at this point is they'll be staying at the Central Iowa Fairgrounds. So this is a reenactment, so there'll be a lot of military vehicles, um, probably some antiques in there, too. So I see that will probably draw a crowd. Um, and I think there's gonna be plans to maybe, well, I don't know, so I'm not gonna say. So the other group that's coming through is a, uh, group, is a car club. It's a classic, uh, car club that's coming through of 50 cars. They're touring, um, the Lincoln Highway from, um, Ohio. And they're going to overnight here in Marshalltown. And that's on September 6th. And we're working with them to make some arrangements for them. Um, and we've also asked the Lincoln Highway Band to perform. Uh, we're not sure how the logistics of that are gonna work out, but they're really excited about that opportunity. And I have to give a shout-out to Bob Monti, that was his idea. Creative Retirement, uh, we have a group coming out of Des Moines, Terrace Hill Society. We also have a group coming from Omaha, but that won't be until May of 2020. So working with some tour groups, uh, coming to Marshalltown. We hosted, uh, from January to today, uh, hosted 54 sporting and tournament events with, uh, over 2,300 attendees. So one of them I wanted to just give a quick mention to is the Marshalltown Softball Association. They're hosting the classic, uh, Clincher 16-inch tournament at the, at the Sixth Street Softball Complex, uh, Memorial Day Weekend. That brings in about 1,500 people. And they were also awarded the Men's Major 16-inch Slow Pitch National Invitational Labor Day Weekend. And that will bring a lot of folks from all over the Midwest to, to play with the big 16-inch softball. So that's, could be anywhere from 2,500 to 3,000 people. So that's a big event, um, for Marshalltown. And we've been working with them on that. Meetings and conventions, we hosted 30 of those with over, um, 2,800 attendees. We were able to host, uh, we bid and host the Central Iowa Tourism Town Hall Meeting on March 27th. And that brought, uh, the tourism folks from the state up to, um, the Best Western and it was nice to have them. People enjoyed meeting in the middle. It's a nice and centrally located. Uh, we've submitted a couple of RFPs for, uh, to be the host for the Iowa Trail Summit, should we be chosen to do that. And, um, also the, uh, I, the University of Iowa, Iowa Center for Agricultural Safety and Health is looking to have a place to host a conference, so we're hoping to maybe get picked to do that. Working with Vision Marshalltown on community pride and, uh, promoting social offerings with our community event calendar. So far, January through May, we've had 171, um, events that have been posted on the calendar. And we've had over 5,400 events, uh, or views on the event page. So we're getting the word out, people are using the calendar. So if you've got an event, get it on the calendar and it gets promoted by the Convention and Visitors Bureau, Vision Marshalltown, and the Marshall County Arts and Culture Alliance. So got a lot of people sharing that good information. And working with Jeff on the, um, Iowa Bike and Hike Guide that will showcase our trails, uh, all of our recreational trails here. And for ongoing marketing, we do a lot with the, the local newspaper, um, the radio, local radio. Do a lot of talks with Ken Hughie and Chuck at, uh, Chamber Chat. For magazine print, we have Iowa Group Travel. We did a little partnership with Matchstick Marvel's, cause a lot of folks that are coming here, they either go to Matchstick Marvel's first and come here or vice versa. So if I can keep them here for lunch, I try to. And, uh, so, but we have a nice little partnership with Joanne up there. And then also in our Iowa Magazine and the Iowa Magazine, we do a lot of promoting of our local events. So people will come. Perfect example is the, uh, this last weekend, they had the Backroads Junket Trail. It's a three-day event that takes place in this area. And people come from all over the Midwest to partake in, uh, junking, cause that's a big thing right now. And, uh, I've been doing some partnerships with, uh, the Marshall County Freedom Rock Association. We have a, a quarter of a page ad in the Iowa Sportsman Magazine to feature, uh, the Marshall County Freedom Rock, the F4 Phantom Jet, and the Golf that takes place here. And, uh, cause there's a feature story from, on Bubba and all the different 99, um, Freedom Rocks. And, and I think we were 41 or 42 of those, so. It's a good opportunity to draw some awareness here to Marshalltown. And then the Chicago 16-inch Hall of Fame Inductee Program, I partnered with the Hall of Fame Concessions, Joe Court at Sixth Street Softball Complex to, uh, congratulate the Hall, congratulate the Hall of Fame Inductees into the program book. And then also what that does is let them know that, uh, to come to the Clincher Classic and also the, the Men's Major 16-inch National Tournament. Ongoing email with constant contact. We email out about 160 emails and the open rate is about 50%. And our website views are at 7,500. An electronic sign that's in the Hy-Vee parking lot, that's the CVB sign. And, uh, we've got about 160 posts on that. And then lots of social media. We just continue to promote local and community events. And so, um, we'll be helping the city promote the Jason Brown, uh, fundraising event. Getting a lot of, um, response on social media with things like that. And then we'll have an opportunity in the magazines to promote that for July as well. We'll make sure that gets put in there. And, um, I just wanna close with saying that for fiscal year 1819, the Convention and Visitors Bureau has awarded over $4,500, uh, to support conventions, sporting events, tournaments, and local community events. So we've been busy. And if you have any questions, just let me know.
Any questions or comments? I, I love the weekly social media postings, so we know who's coming to town. And some people put it on their marquees or the, the moving billboard things and, and then we, we know where to go. You know, that's, that's nice.
That helps the restaurants know how to staff as well. So that's, that's kind of what we were hoping to do with that. And let attractions and other people know that if the Little League boys are coming to town, you better have plenty of sunflower seeds. Right, Al? Thank you.
Good report, thank you. Okay. Now we got to go to the I resolutions. Would you read number one, please?
Resolution approving contract change order number two for the Iowa River Trail Phase III Project Engineering Services for Clapsettle Garber Associates, an increase of $163,000.
Move for approval, Your Honor?
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Tie goes to Cahill on that one. Discussion.
Uh, good evening, Justin Nickel, Public Works Director. As read, this is for amendment number two to a contract with Clapsettle and Garver for Iowa River Trail Phase III. Uh, this essentially, uh, allows CGA in partnership with Calhoun and Burns and Associates to perform environmental field review, preliminary design, and hydraulic analysis of Bridges number two through five, which would be Radio Tower Bridge and then the preceding four bridges leading out to the Iowa River, uh, Large Bridge, Large Trust Bridge. Uh, the engineering costs are funded through a state recreation trail grant at about 75%. And Trails Incorporated will supply the, uh, matching 25%. Can I answer any questions?
Any public comment? Let's roll call.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Very good, that one carried. Would you read the resolution, the second resolution?
Resolution authorizing an application to the Iowa Economic Development Authority and acceptance of disaster-related community development block grant funds for housing assistance.
Anyone wanna move?
So move, Your Honor?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yes, I'll just quickly introduce this item and, uh, let you know that Region Six, Julie Winter is a planner there and she is here. They would ultimately be the ones administering these funds for the city. If you go back all the way to August, uh, as we were still in the aftermath of the tornado, we actually did approve a resolution back at that time for the request of these funds, but for a completely different purpose. As we've now come to the point where, you know, we're, we're 10 months beyond, we realize that there are different housing needs than what we had originally, um, thought there would be following the tornado. And so this letter, um, of request is basically asking that we could be able to use the funds for, um, housing reconstruction, um, for loan buydown, for down payment assistant, assistance, and/or owner-occupied rehabilitation of existing homes. And so, uh, the difficult part with this is the income qualifications. And so it's going to take, um, a, a lot of work, I think, to get the right people in touch with the, these funds to, um, get them the assistance that best fits them for housing. But this is, uh, us making that request finally, um, to the Iowa Economic Development Authority. And, um, Julie can answer any questions or fill in any blanks, uh, if you would like.
Any questions?
Your Honor, I had, um, I'm trying to find where my questions were. It was a long letter and there was a lot of information in it. My understanding of it, um, was that part of this would be to maybe, to construct homes on, um, lots that were, um, cleared because of the tornado. And I know that there was another option in here that talked about, um, these homes would be somewhere in the range of $170,000-ish in their construction. There was some concern that that, um, might not fit into some of the areas that were, um, damaged in the tornado just because the housing in those areas weren't at that same level. And I know there was an option in here, if I understood it correctly. And so I'm, I'm asking to make sure my understanding is correct, that there was one option in which some of these could be built outside of the tornado-damaged area. Can you clarify that for me? I wanna make sure my understanding is correct.
Yes, Jessica, is it okay if I take this?
Go ahead.
Okay.
Thank you, Julie.
So we initially wrote the proposal. Again, as Jessica mentioned, we did originally have the idea to do just owner-occupine. I think now we are able to think a little bit more creatively on this. So what we're actually proposing is, in the budget, is five owner-occupine, two reconstructions. That would be, we would be able to reconstruct a house that was previously on a tornado-damaged parcel. And then two additional houses that would be exactly what you mentioned. It's kind of like an equity buydown. So if someone wanted to, say for example, build a new house in a greenfield on an available lot in Marshalltown, they could do that. And we would be able to use these funds for about a $60,000 equity buydown for that house. It would have to fit the income guidelines. My understanding is that they could also potentially purchase an existing house in Marshalltown with those same benefits. Again, so long as they fit in the economic, in the income guidelines for that. So, um, I would say that those, out of everything, we're offering nine potential, the abilities to do nine houses on this. I think a lot of this is, it can be flexible up to this point. There's room for flexibility to adopt that budget as we see that projects are feasible right now. If we find that there are more, um, lots, for example, that we could do reconstruction on, that it would also suit well to get in that roughly $110,000 purchase price, then certainly we can do that. If we find that the, the funds would be suited better to another approach, then we will probably adopt the funds to do that, per city, uh, recommendation.
Well, I appreciate the flexibility in that. Can you define greenfield for me? You said in a greenfield, is that the right term?
Absolutely, yes, a new construction. So any of the new lots that we So any of the new lots that we may have to build on, we may actually be able to use that funding for that purpose, even though it's not particularly tornado-related. The tornado has really damaged the housing stock that's available right now. And my understanding is that we definitely need a lot of housing stock. So we are thankful to be able to provide affordable housing to add to that. And new construction is also great, too. So.
Again, I appreciate the work that you guys are doing. I know I've sat on committees with you and the work that the Housing Fund has worked with. I guess that my only concern or my only plea would be that, if at all possible, to keep these homes, if we're doing construction or reconstruction in the tornado area, I mean, in the area, the north area, because I think that anything we can do to improve the value of our neighborhoods, it, you know, again, could be a type of a catalyst thing that if we could, you know, string two or three of them within a block or something or a way to make it work and people say, hey, it's really nice to have, to have a higher quality home there, that it may be something that would spur, spur others to do. We have seen a great deal of improvement in people's homes and people have taken a great step in new roofs, new siding, new trim, new landscaping, and through the various organizations that have helped make that happen. So if there's any way we can keep that within, I guess that was my only concern. I'd really like to see that happen within the northeast community, northwest community of town.
Yeah. Yeah. That would be our hope, too.
Appreciate that.
Your Honor, could we get just the basic restrictions? What's the income restrictions? Where are we at? What's the high and what?
The one that I can quote off the top of my head is a family of four cannot make more than $54,800. And so.
Family of four?
Mm-hmm.
Can't make more than $54,000? Okay. Thank you.
Does that answer? Okay. The guidelines are based on Iowa Economic Development Authority. It's median family income. So it depends on the number of people in your household. And they can't make more than 80% of the median family income from Marshall County. And so I think Jessica's correct, that that number sounds right for four. So we verify income based on that number of the family and the household income within that household.
Okay.
And so they have to fit at that threshold.
Okay. Is that, is that just one salary or is that all the salaries in the house?
All income.
All income.
Of all members of that family.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments? Any public comment?
Carolyn Lovelace, 8 North 12th Avenue here in Marshalltown. And I would totally agree with Ms. Cahill because really, we're the neighborhood that was impacted. And if that, if some of that money could be used for painting houses and helping finish up some of the odds and ends that, that insurance hasn't covered, that would help the whole area look better because people are really, really trying. And that area needs the help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Let's take a vote.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Yes.
Very good. That one carried. Before we go on to the next topic, I would just like to thank Julie and Marty Wyemore in that office. Those two, if you guys don't know this, those two do more for this town in grant writing. Well, I'd have to put Michelle Spontimer in there, too. But it's amazing what they've been able to do, helping with the trails is just one example. I think the pool is now going to be available for some of the programming for the city. So you guys are pretty quiet. You don't blow your own horn, but you really do a lot of good around here. And I just had to say that. Okay, let's go on to the next resolution, please.
Resolution setting public hearing prior to approving the amended budget for fiscal year ending June 30. Now, the agenda had posted the public hearing would be at noon, but since the meeting will be held at 5:30, we'll have to adjust that resolution. Is there a motion?
Move to approve. Second. Thank you. Discussion.
Diana Steiner, Finance Director. Going to click on this form. Can you get that to open, the notice of public hearing amendment?
Yeah, you have the mouse, though, don't you?
It's not opening.
It'll open on your tab.
Oh. It's, it's opening. You have to click up on the top. It's opened multiple times.
There we go. See if I can get this bigger. Can you make it bigger, Jessica?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So when we were doing the FY '20 budget, this, earlier this calendar year, we gave you a reestimate of fiscal year '19. So, and now that we're closer to the end of the fiscal year, we had a few more adjustments to make. And this is going to be the official document to say that we want a budget amendment. So I would like to go over that with you now. So again, we'll, we'll change the notice of public hearing to 5:30 on May 28th before it's printed in the newspaper. So property tax levies do not change based on this budget amendment. The TIF revenues will also not change. So those are zero. I do want to let you know that this budget in this column here, in the first column of numbers, that is what you adopted in March of 2018. And then these are the adjustments. And this, this final column is what our amendment, final amendment will be. So in other city taxes for $219,000, that is an increase. We are expecting more motel hotel tax, about $172,000. And the first payment of July of 2018, we received the surcharge for the E911 payment of $47,000. So that's, that's what makes up the $219,000. Other city taxes in here, which we had originally budgeted, was for local option sales tax, franchise fees, and utility excise taxes. The next item down, licenses and permits, a change of $62,000. This is from increased building permits, I'm sure, from due from the tornado, and zoning licenses and permits. The next one, $370,000 for use of money. This is primarily increased interest income. And it also includes a decrease in rentals for the Senior Citizens Center and the Coliseum rental, since they're out of commission. Intergovernmental of $445,000. This includes an increase of road use tax by about $100,000. It also includes downtown master plan for $100,000, wayfinding $50,000, Third Avenue corridor $25,000, bike path $257,000, airport $74,000. And as you know, we've got the new lead grant, so we put in $50,000 for that. Transit for $88,000. And our one and only FEMA payment that we've received this year is $3,380. That was for the Optimus Park. That was a small project, so we did get paid. But other than that, we have not received any FEMA payments this fiscal year. The next one, charges for services, that is a decrease, primarily, again, from the Coliseum not being open for recreational activities. Special assessments for sidewalks and streets, that did not change. Mislenous, $4.2 million. That's where the bulk of our insurance for our property sits. So from the tornado, we got revenue for the buildings, cars, equipment, staff time for relocation expenses, et cetera. This also includes new donations that we received. Other financing sources for $371,000. This is adjustment for our bonds. We originally budgeted $2.2 million for the GEO bond. It came in at $2.4. And our state revolving fund, we originally budgeted $3.3 and it came in at $3.5. And transfers in, these are just transfers between different funds. As you recall, we put $475,000 in to the dangerous and dilapidated building from the general fund. And then we also dropped what we thought we'd spend on streets. So that netted to about $292,000. So that's the revenue portion. Any questions on the revenues? Again, we hope that our FEMA money will come in next fiscal year. So the next section is our expenses. So public safety is primarily police, fire, and inspections. The $713,000 is made up of about $350,000 we received from, well, insurance expenses for the building and the vehicles and equipment. The FEMA demo program, about $102,000. We had vests that were donated. And so we spent that money for about $122,000. Again, that E911 dispatch, that payment we got in this fiscal year, we turned over to the commission for $47,000. And retirements, they had an additional $74,000. Public works, $1.4 million. The bulk of this was all tornado-related, replacement of vehicles, equipment, and staff time due to the tornado. Health and social services. Are we expecting to spend about $188,000 for our new lead grant? About $700,000 in tornado expenses. Culture and recreation, again, about $1.7 million in tornado expenses. Community and economic development, as I had mentioned before, we expect a higher increase in our motel tax. So since we turn around and give 67% to the Marshall County Convention and Visitors Bureau's, we increased that by $115,000. Our downtown master plan cost sitting there for $200,000, wayfinding $50,000. Our FEMA valor program for $87,000. You had approved additional facades from prior meetings of $22,000. Our neighborhood grant for $30,000. General government, there was additional local option sales tax, council-designated activities, which you approved. This includes a construction manager, $50,000, half of the ADA transition plan, the 13th Street cameras, fireworks, and the NEA grant application. This line also includes insurance tornado damages of $600,000. No change in debt service. When we took out the debt, our first payment is not until fiscal year '20. So that did not change that. Capital projects, this includes our dangerous and dilapidated buildings for $120,000, our police and fire building for $5.3 million, Bike Path $262,000, the East-South Ridge Road purchase of that property, $89,000, Airport $29,000, Coliseum $56,000. And then we reduced some of the costs for the street sidewalk and parking based on what we could accomplish this year. So we reduced that by 1.2. Our business-type enterprises, Marshalltown Water Works is included in our budget, but they did not have any change. But out of this total, their portion is 4.4 million. Just want to let you know where that came from. Primarily, the reduction in this is due to the state revolving fund. Again, we're not going to spend as much as we had originally thought this fiscal year. Composting, a reduction in that. I'm, I'm sorry, stormwater, a reduction in that. And then composting from the tornado, we increased it by $523,000, and transit by And again, that transfer out equals the same as the transfer in up above. You're just moving money between funds. So overall, yeah, we're at $7.7 million expenses exceeding revenue. A lot of that is, again, from FEMA money that will be coming in next fiscal year. So when we adopted the budget back in March of 2018, we thought the fund balance would be $35, $35 million. It's now projected to be almost $40 million. Again, this does not affect anybody's property tax levy. So this will be published in the paper this week for the public hearing on the 28th. Is there any questions on this document? We'll go on to the next document. So this is just a recap of all the activity by the different funds. So you have a line for revenue and expense for each of the funds. Again, this is your adopted budget from March of 2018. This is your actual activity for the 10 months ending this fiscal year in April. This next column is what we gave you during the budget cycle this year for the reestimated of fiscal year '19. This next column is what we're proposing and the difference, increase, decrease between these two. And so there's not as much changes from our activity earlier this year. So I just put some notes along the way of the differences. So they're pretty self-explanatory. But do you have any questions on this document? The next one is a very similar document. It's set up the same way, only it's just for the general fund 001. So it's more by department. So this is for your permission as well. This is primarily adjustments for our actual liability insurance, which we pay in April. So we were able to incorporate that. Since we were not able to move into the police and fire building yet, I did have to increase utilities for the existing police and fire buildings. And like I mentioned before, the motel hotel tax will be an increase. The police department changed some staff around, took the parking officer to full-time. And then we had additional facade expenses approved. Any questions on this document? This last document shows the cash balance by fund at the beginning of the fiscal year, our net activity with our budget amendment, and our projected ending balance at the end of the fiscal year. So originally, when we put the budget together in March of 2018, to make our general fund 001 to zero, we asked and you approved a transfer of $14,840 from the local option sales tax. With this new budget, we have an increase of $42,000 with that $14,000 in there. So again, if we don't need it, we won't transfer any money from the local option sales tax. The ones that are colored are, in yellow, are from the tornado activities. So you can, we added those this year to track those costs. There is one mistake on this form. The second page at the bottom, that total should be a negative $7,724,857. None of the other numbers changed. It's just a totaling of this column. I didn't pick up the waterworks for $372,000. So does anyone have any questions at all on the budget amendment?
Doesn't look like it up here. I guess I should invite the public, too.
Doesn't look like it up here. I guess I should invite the public to. Nobody getting up, let's call the roll.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Very good.
And with that goes a great big thank you.
Yeah, no kidding. If you guys only knew how good she is. I'm not kidding. Let's go on to the next item, which is facade grant items.
Resolution to approve the facade grant application for 17 North First Street.
Move for approval, Your Honor.
I'll second.
Discussion, yes. I had seen Mr. Huzak here, now I understand why you're here, Jenny.
Jenny Etter, MCBD, 16 East Main. So my hat tonight is for the incentive grant program. For our recommendations to approve of the applications that we received. Myself and Martha Green went and saw the projects, and they walked us through their buildings, and we got to see what they were going to do with their business plans. And so then I shared with the committee all of their estimates and all of the conversations with their contractors and the work they wanted to do. So these are exciting. You know, as a reminder, this is the funds that you all have been approving since 2006. And since that time, you've approved 24 different buildings to have their facades done or building code upgrade. And to date, you have approved of over $400,000 in repairs and building code upgrade. The interesting, or the most impressive part of this is their investment. You've invested $400,000, they've invested over $10 million on these projects. So nice turnaround on your dollars for this project. So the ones that we're looking at tonight are La Salud, Gabriela Vargas Avalos at 17 North First Street, they're upgrading their facade, it's going to be beautiful. And Barb Hagstrand, her building at 19 to 21 South Second Avenue. We're asking for that to be approved as well. She's putting in more windows. Other than the 20 that the insurance paid for, there's still more windows to put in that they aren't paying for. And all of the construction, by the way, that's being done is way after they've settled with their insurance. So we make sure that they pay for all of their improvements first with their insurance, and then this is over and above those costs. There was a third application, but that was turned down because it did not meet the grant criteria. It was a new construction, and these grant funds have always been for restoration and renovation of existing buildings. So I recommend the approval for these projects.
Thank you. Any questions, Jenny?
Have we ever approved one for Barb before?
Yes.
I thought we had already approved a grant for her.
That was in 2015, and that was for the Kibbe Building on Main Street. This is for her own building on Second Avenue.
Oh, okay.
So two different buildings.
By the way, I saw her out today on the lift, putting the plants in.
The plants are going in.
And she's also handling the Main Street hanging plant project this year.
Yeah, she's the chair of that committee this year.
Any other questions? Any public comment? Let's vote.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was just one.
So I move for approval for the second facade grant application for 19 to 21, 19 and 21 South Second Avenue.
Second. I doubt there's any other discussion, let's go ahead and vote on it.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Carried, very good. On to item number five, which is the...
We have three police and fire change orders. We have Hillsabek Shot, an increase of $3,183. Foreman Ford, an increase of $728. And De Vries Electric, an increase of $12,837.54. Would you like to consider them all as one motion or each individually?
Yes.
All three together, right? Let's do it that way. Is there a motion to approve all three?
So moved.
Second.
Was that Lamer and Isom?
It was.
Thank you.
So all the hard work, and I'll have to undo it because we have an omission and we have an error in our two resolutions. So I'll quickly go through those. Resolution number one with Hillsabek Shot, for $3,183, we have an omission in the last page of the documentation. We had another change for $2,225. We'll simply write a resolution and bring that back to you on the 28th. The Foreman Ford resolution is correct, for $728. And then, since they're not here, I'll throw Story Construction under their bus. Under the bus, their math for the resolution for De Vries was wrong, that should be $12,954. So I'd ask for an amendment to the motion when we get there. To quickly run through, the $3,183 for HSI was work that Story was strategically trying to hold back to make sure that our mason didn't impact in our strategy and negotiating throughout the mason process, as the council's probably fairly aware, took a long time. We finally pulled the trigger and went ahead and authorized HSI to do this work, and the mason will simply either have to repair it if they damage it, or they'll have to protect it so they don't damage it. We got tired of waiting in the mason negotiations, so we moved forward with that. The $728 to Foreman Ford is for privacy film to the SWAT room and bike shop of the police and fire facility. Both of those rooms do have external windows and then two external doors that have glass. It's a glass front. So the police department decided that they wanted privacy film to make sure that the public wasn't out there looking in on business. So that's what the $728 is for. The De Vries change of $12,900 is for the addition of panic strips. So for those who have been to the facility, when police officers are bringing in people they've arrested to the booking facility, there is a feature along the walls which allows them, if they get into a dangerous situation, to hit this panic strip, and it calls for backup. So it was not installed along the entire perimeter of the area they would have liked, so we added this $6,900 for additional panic strip. And then we had about six, a little less than $6,000 for changes to the conference room lighting. As I understood, I don't have Story here for backup as I usually do. We had some changes between the electronic controls that were in the wall and then the electronic controls that are actually in the lighting system for that conference room, and so it required some rework to make sure that those two could work together. I believe that covers it, and I will do my best to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions?
So we're blacking out some windows externally?
They're not exactly blacked out, Councilor Isom, but yes, they are, so they are able to be viewed from the outside. We did have several windows like that in other secure areas. I would say that either this slipped through in communication between the police department and our architect, or whether the police department just wasn't heard. But, so we did have these areas that aren't necessarily high-profile, but areas that they did desire to have no viewing from the outside into those areas.
Other questions or comments? Public comment? Let's vote.
Cahill?
Yes.
With the amendments for those math corrections.
I was just going to point that out.
Yes.
That way I don't have to do another change order for $63.
I'm assuming the mover and seconder would agree with that as well?
Yes.
Lamer and Martin? Or Isom? Okay. As amended, Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Very good, carried. Our next item is item J, under which the first is an ordinance, would you please...
Yes, we have the second reading of ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances, City of Marshalltown by amending Chapter 20, Section 2161, no parking anytime, by adding no parking on East Main Street between 8th Avenue and 9th Avenue.
Is there a motion to approve that?
So moved. I'll second.
Okay. Discussion? Public comment? Roll call.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Very good, that one carried as well. Would you read the second ordinance for us?
We have the first reading of ordinance enacting a code of ordinances for the City of Marshalltown revising, amending, restating, codifying, and compiling certain existing general ordinances of the city, dealing with subjects embraced in such code of ordinances, and declaring an emergency. Now, is there a motion and a second?
So moved, Your Honor.
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion?
The city has been working the last year on getting the codification completed. We received the final draft back from the publisher in March. And included with the agreement was legal review of our code and reorganization of the code chapters to fit the publisher's desire. So we are working with the clerk of court to make sure that our code sections for writing tickets are the same with the court system over the next few weeks. Staff recommends that we hold a public hearing on June 10th, or we could waive a reading if you'd so desire and have the public hearing on the 28th.
One of the things I'd like to point out that was kind of one of the reasons that we were moving forward with was really an upgrade to kind of how we did things. And if you click on the memo, that was part of this item in the packet, there is a short link of marshalltown-iA.gov/citycode, which brings you to the online version. So the online version is currently active of what we would be recodifying to. However, none of this is actually in effect until you actually complete the third reading in a public hearing and we publish the date of effectiveness. So, but this is really where everything is. I do hope that everybody will find this to be much more user-friendly than what we've had in the past. And, yeah, and so if there's any questions, we'd be happy to try and answer them. Oh, and one other thing to mention was, this version only includes any ordinances passed through November 26 of 2018. And I didn't look to see if we'd passed anything other than zoning ordinances since that date, but any of those would not be included in this version.
If you have trouble sleeping at night, I recommend reading the whole thing. Any comments, questions?
You'll note that the council manual is also included in the recodification. However, it's one of the early first, I don't know what chapter it is.
35.
Chapter 35. That is not changing the way that we pass the changes to the manual, the council manual. They'll still be done by resolution, it's just that they are easily accessible through the code book.
If there are no questions or comments from councils of the republic, let's vote.
I'd like to make a comment, I wasn't going to, but I decided. Earlier, Linda Clark, 306 South Second Avenue. Two weeks ago at the council meeting, another citizen made a request. And the way I understood, what I had heard, she needed to have a council member, or the mayor, or someone to put on the agenda what she had asked to be done. Okay, she asked it of all of you. Not one of you even made a comment. And you know your council rules, which now I am going to have to get a copy and read them because I wasn't aware. I thought when you stood up here and you asked, and she said she wanted it to please be placed on the agenda. Her only word person didn't even say, "Oh, yes, I will make that motion." So I am disappointed in all of you.
You're out of order. That was not germane to the topic.
Well, excuse me, it was to what she was saying about the recodification of the council's, you know, meetings. Was that was part what she was saying. She said that that was going to be, and you said that if we needed to read to, we could read that. I need to read the city rules for addressing your council, so I'll take your out of order.
Thank you. Any other comment? Let's vote.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Very good, that carried as well. On to the discussion items under K.
Is there any interest in waiving a second reading?
Oh, good question.
I wouldn't recommend that. This is a pretty big change, and it's something that I think deserves the full three readings and the time for the public to review it.
Okay, first discussion item is the follow-up on liquor license for the Coliseum.
Yes, it's been three weeks since we met, and we brought this idea forward mostly because we're having to make some design decisions related to the catering kitchen for the Coliseum. And whether or not alcohol would be served by a license holder out of that will impact that design. And so there was a question of what do other cities do, and I put that out on my list serving. You can see that there's a mixture, but there are some cities who, for a conference center or event center and sports complexes, do have liquor licenses that the cities hold. At this time, just to move the discussion forward, I don't really want to have the conversation on the level of should the city be doing this, or should somebody else be doing it, because it's truly, either way, the kitchen would need to be outfitted in a certain manner. And so what I'm asking for tonight is, and making a recommendation, is that we do move forward with designing the kitchen to be functional for alcohol sales and storage. And then the conversation of who would actually be the liquor license holder and what might be beneficial to the city financially, come as we're actually getting close to opening a building and operating a building.
I thought that made sense.
Ms. Warren, I didn't hear you.
I think that makes sense, to move forward and make the kitchen accessible that way. You know, being able to secure alcohol, and then serve it from behind a counter, for example. And, yeah, that made sense to me. So I think we, I would say we should move forward with it. And then we can decide later who's going to be licensed.
Any other comments?
My favor would be, no, we shouldn't be in the business. A lot of headaches, a lot of potential bad happenings.
Your Honor, I think that last comment begs a question. If you're going to have a venue of a thousand, that seats a thousand or holds a thousand people, weddings, celebrations, concerts, whatever, I think we have to have the facility ready to accommodate that. Whether we as a city apply and get our own liquor license or farm it out, so to speak, should be a later discussion, but I think we need to move ahead with the accommodation of this feature.
Thank you. Others like to weigh in?
I would, if that's okay.
It is.
As I recall, we've, whenever there's a, somebody that wants to rent the Coliseum, along with that comes a temporary liquor license so they can serve alcohol. So if we're going to be still allowing that to happen like we have in the past, I think we need to accommodate so they have the accommodations to do that without being a temporary, something temporary. I think it needs to be something that's in the building. Then let's talk about who holds the license. I have some comments on that too, but we're not talking about that tonight.
All right, okay. My first contact with the Coliseum was when we moved to town and wanted to get to the courthouse. We had a Rumbles band come up here and raised $8,000, and I'm pretty sure they, somebody had a liquor license. had a liquor license for that.
Hope so.
Other comments?
Could, could there be a motion to direct staff to move forward with the kitchen being outfitted for alcohol sales and service?
I'll make a motion that we accommodate the, have the kitchen with the design accommodations for alcohol sales and service.
Thank you.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion or public comment? Let's vote.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
Okay, thank you. And the final discussion item is the strategic plan first quarter update.
Yes, so the first quarter of the year ended on March 31st and this is a, a pretty bland update, so I'm not going to go through it line by line. The way that we had set up the strategic plan after our session in late November, knowing that we had a lot of stuff that was going to be very intense in the first quarter of the year was truly to not have too many deadlines in the first quarter of the year. The one deadline that we did have was making sure that our, things posted on our website automatically post on our Facebook page and that has happened. And so that was the one thing that was scheduled and we were able to accomplish it. There was a lot of other work on ongoing items as well. And there's, there's a lot of work that has been done, you know, starting in the second quarter. We're basically halfway through the second quarter now. There will be some deadlines in the second quarter that we're going to miss, but the work is still on track to be completed either within the quarter or shortly thereafter. So I'd be happy to answer any questions now or at any, any time that you might have any about what our plan is and what we're doing. The other thing I would like to mention, it was brought up that our strategic plan is not on our website and it is now. If you go to the mayor and council page, there is a whole section on the strategic plan, what our goals are, and then a copy of the planning document as well.
Very good. Any questions, Jessica?
This isn't, this is, Jessica, this isn't part of the, the strategic plan, but I was just wondering, at the end of the, this quarter, we should be, have a pretty good idea of our hiring capacity. How, are we pretty well full? Are we still looking for people? Are these positions full that we, that we lost people at?
I believe there's just one position-
Park and, park and rec, how they doing with their summer help?
Yeah, I, that's something where I believe Jeff has provided some updates in, in the weekly update on where we're at. And so, yeah, that's something where we can provide that information separately, but ultimately there have been some new hires here that have started in the, the last two months that have brought the engineering staff back up to nearly full capacity. There's still one position that's vacant.
How about the rest of the city? How, how do we stand?
I think we're still trying to fill some transit positions, that those are the ones that are most difficult to fill. And then I believe that in June is when the civil service list for police expires. So there will have to be a new, you know, process there to repopulate a civil service list. But otherwise, yeah, I would say, you can always go out onto our webpage too. There is actually on the main page, an employment listing where it is, you can see any jobs that are currently available. And so that's where I'd recommend anybody who's interested in applying for a job, that's how you access the information as well. We have an employment button and you can click on that and see everything that is currently posted and available.
Okay, thank you much.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. No vote needed on this one. Let's go on to public comment. And I need to repeat the caveat again. Members of the public may make comments on any item that was not on the agenda during this time. Approach the mic, state your name and address. Limit the comments to three minutes unless longer comments authorized by me. The speaker shall direct comments to the mayor and to the council as a whole. Mayor and councilors shall not engage in discussion or debate on items raised by the members of the public and are actually to be taken on those items in order to comply with the open meetings laws. Before I invite anybody to the mic, I want to repeat what Val said about the concert coming up, July 6th. Jason Brown is the artist. It's going to be held right in front of the Coliseum. The streets are going to be blocked off. He's the guy that if you listen to the radio and you hear the Carl Chevrolet voice, that's, that's his voice. He's, he's had some hits. He's got a following. We could have 2,500 to 5,000 people here and the idea is raise 150,000. So tell your neighbors, invite people. When we start selling the tickets, which I think are going to be 15 bucks, invite out of town people to come in because this is going to be a big celebration. We're talking about getting a bouncy thing out there, all sorts of food trucks, items to eat, items to drink. They're going to put the, 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 the band's going to set up at about 10 o'clock in the morning and have it available until he actually takes the stage around 7 o'clock. And so we're looking for local bands that might like to come. And other events, there are going to be some things, maybe citing some of the people that have done so well on the tornado recovery. So that, I'm hoping that's going to be a big day here. Sorry that I made the public have to listen to that before you can run to the microphone, but it is now public comment time.
Linda Clark, 306 South Second Avenue. And I agree, it's going to be a wonderful event that we're going to be united in with that for raising money for the Coliseum. Now, since I didn't state myself plainly, since the council's manual is codified and two weeks ago, when another citizen had asked to have an issue put on the agenda, I was not aware that it required a city council member or the mayor to make that motion for her when she stood here and asked that. Now that I am aware of that, I'm going to be following and reading, as the mayor has suggested, the rules of the council. So I apologize for being out of order at the other time, but thank you so much for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Gary Thompson, 601 East Main. I have two comments. One, Joel, please never sing again. And two, now this is an interesting question because by rules, you can't comment on this, but I think we need to know the answer to this question. Last council meeting, and it's not particularly about Casey's, it's about how you guys conduct business and the rules. Okay? We have rules in place for variance of ordinances in building construction, things like that. We have ordinances in place. But the last meeting, Casey's asked that they not have to put in rainwater retention on their property since they expanded it and fell into the rules that you guys established that they had to catch their rainwater on site. One of the things that was commented on, or one of the reasons was it was fiscally inappropriate or prohibitive for them to do that. The Casey's CEO is paid over $2 million a year. Casey's is a publicly traded company. At the time of your vote, the stock was at $134 a share. They did not apply for a variance. The vote went through and it appears to us that if any company comes along and says, hey, here's $25,000, I'll help you with stormwater protection in the area, I won't have to spend a quarter of a million dollars to put underground storage under my parking lot. So the question is, and I know you can't answer this, when do rules apply and when don't they? And this is kind of following up on Linda's. You know, that did not go through the proper procedures of a variance. You know, we didn't get a chance to come up, you know, and, and call in, you know, and went through the appeals process and things like that. So the question is, I've been talking to some other people about new businesses opening in Marshalltown post tornado. So when do we have to put in rainwater retention and when don't we? Do we have to have a CEO that makes $2 million a year to get out of it? You know, I don't understand. And some of you guys aren't even making eye contact with me. Come on, guys. You know, please answer. How does Casey's get a buy on this and other small businesses don't?
We can have the engineering department send you a follow-up email tomorrow.
But why can't we have it public so everybody hears it? Then I have to take that, Jessica, then I have to take that and make that public?
You can. It's a public record.
But how?
Because ultimately at this point, you're asking about something that isn't on the agenda and us discussing it would be an open meeting violation. And so rather than put us into an open meeting violation, you can receive an email from the city engineer's office, which is a public record, which you can then distribute. This was discussed at that meeting and so, yeah. So the video is also available online, but we can't go any further with this because it is an open meeting violation.
Okay. Well, after I sit down, can any of you just make a, a public comment like Joel did about when rules apply to you and when you see fit not to follow the rules? Is that asking too much?
If you're asking for an open meeting violation, I think it would be a bad decision for anybody on this council to commit something that would be an open violation.
Can we put that on the agenda next meeting to tell us how you make decisions based on the rules and when the rules don't apply?
If one of the councilors or I put it on the agenda, it'll be on the agenda.
Joel, if I let you sing again, would you put it on the agenda? Thanks, everybody.
Any other comment? We are adjourned at 11 after 7.